It is seven o'clock on October the 4th, 2012, and I'll call the meeting of the Woodland Park City Council to order. Cindy, can we do a roll call?
Thank you. Mayor Turley.
Present.
Gary Brevetto, Bob Carlson, Teri Harrison.
Here.
Carol Harvey.
Here.
John Schaefer.
Here.
Eric Smith.
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, for our agenda tonight, the first thing we have is a presentation and update by our President of the Chamber of Congress, Debbie Miller. Welcome Debbie.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening and to talk to all of you tonight about our yearly Visitor Center review. I'm trying something new. It's my belief that when you serve in a chamber, that you need to be on the cutting edge of technology. So, tonight, we're trying a new presentation. It's a web-based presentation through Prezi. So, we're going to go through that. I have my fingers crossed. We've done a run-through. It worked fine then, so we're going to hope that it does so as well. But, this is my yearly presentation, and I am happy to report that I have several board members out in the audience, and I'm going to ask them to stand, so you all know who the Chamber Board members with me are tonight. And, I also have my assistant, Sue Griswold's back there as well, and she's just going to wave. She's doing the wave back there.
Debbie, I know they won't necessarily be picked up on the mic, but I'd like to have them stand again and have each one of them introduce themselves.
Sure, absolutely. Jed, I'll start with you.
I'm Jed Bowman.
Jim Olson.
Luke Conrad.
Lenore Hotchkiss.
Dana Lloyd.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, we're going to start the presentation out, and I'm going to explain to you that we're going to be talking about our fiscal year, beginning in October 1st of 2011, running through September 30th of 2012. So, as you think about the presentation, those are the fiscal year that I'm talking about. And, again, if everything works properly, this is going to be a really cool presentation. Because we have a couple of new Board Council members here tonight, I wanted to touch a little bit about the fundamental mission of what our Visitor Center does. And, the mission is that we want to strengthen awareness about our community, about Woodland Park, about Teller County, and the region. And, when we strengthen that awareness, we help stimulate the economy and the economic growth of our area. When we talk about the Visitor Center, you can't talk about it without talking about the Chamber and the connection between the two. Many of the programs and the projects that the Chamber hosts and puts together helps the Visitor Center as well. One such project is our profile book. Now, I'm going to pass the profile book out. I'm actually going to pass the presentation, everything out afterwards. One of the things Scott said to me, "Presentation 101, you don't hand the things out before because they look at everything." So, our profile book came out the 1st of 2012. You'll see the beautiful photograph that's on front, happens to be the background of the presentation as well. And, I want to send a great big shout-out and thank you to Lenore Hotchkiss, who took all of the pictures for our profile book. So, everything that is in the profile book is local pictures. And, another thing I want to note, Eric, to you, you are going to see Colorado Springs Christian School in this book. Two years ago, when I was here, you're flipping through, looking at it, and we had omitted the Christian School, and we're glad to have it back in. But, this is a great project that we put together. We utilize it for not only visitors, but we utilize it a lot for relocation. The hospital has used this book to actually go out and recruit doctors. It's used by the realtors we have, and so it's a great tool that we have as well. So, to talk to you today about the Visitor Center, we want to talk to you and give you a little history about our Colorado Tourism Office matching grant. In 2011, we received $7,500, and with those dollars, we created three commercials. And, when we looked at creating the commercials, we looked at long shelf life. We also looked at generic. Nothing that was going to date the commercial that would put it out of date before the three to six years we thought we could get out of it. In addition, when we received our 2012 grant, which was for $15,000, we looked at how can we use these commercials during holiday time as well. So, what we did was go into the commercials. We actually just changed the music, but we were able to use our three commercials for that. I'm not going to play this commercial, but I'll go on. We've got some others we're going to talk about here. Not only did we create the three television commercials about shopping, dining, and weekend getaway, we also created radio commercials that went along with those. When we focused on our grant and how were we going to be best served with the $15,000 matching, we put the $15,000 with it, so we had $30,000 to look at for matching dollars this year. We also looked at the fact we were coming out of a recession, and we understood that vacations and staycations were something we believed we could have an impact on. We went to Comcast. We worked with Comcast. We worked with K-RDO down in the Springs. So, we focused on a demographic region from Denver, all the way south to Trinidad, east to Lamar, and west out to Guffey. All those counties that are listed above, we worked with those communities to begin our program of actively promoting our region with our three commercials. We began this the 3rd week of May, and we ran these commercials through Labor Day. So, if technology works, you're going to have the chance to get to see this commercial, and I'm going to be in real deep water. You'll find out why at the end. This is our weekend getaway commercial. The sound is better on television, and those two actors you see are, yes, my husband and my assistant, in the hot tub together. But, it's a great -- you can't -- I can't tell you. I know Sue has had it happen. Jeff had it happen. I had it happen as well over the summer. So many people walked up and said, "We saw your commercials," so we knew it was being played. We also did our radio commercials as well, and I'd play it for you, but it's basically a 30-second commercial about the appetite in our community. On June 23rd, all of you know what happened to our region. And, here we were just kicking off, the middle of our staycation and vacation program, and Waldo Canyon fire erupts. On June 25th, they closed the highway to our region, and for eight days, it was closed. This had a huge impact on us. A couple of things we did right. We had those commercials in place. They were being shown through those regions. We were able to go in and work with Comcast and K-RDO. You'll see that Comcast actually did a scrawl for us across the Weather Channel in those regions, saying, "Woodland Park, Teller County businesses are open." They had a little tagline about how to get here. K-RDO worked with us on our commercials and put the taglines on those commercials for those eight days that the highway was closed. Then, they picked up and went back to our original commercials, and again, those ran through Labor Day. We worked with Colorado Springs Convention and Visitors Bureau. We worked with Manitou Springs. We worked with Pike's Peak Country Attractions. All the different regional, the Colorado Tourism Office, on how could we best address the issue of tourism through what happened to us through Waldo Canyon fire. We did take the Colorado pledge. That was more of a social media pledge that we asked people to post on their Facebook, on their Twitter accounts. You know, let your friends know, come to Colorado and support the communities that went through the wildfire. We heard from City Manager David Butterey at our Board meeting yesterday that the sales tax has bounced back up for our region, and lodging tax is just down 5%. It's my belief with these commercials that we had going during this time, we were able to mitigate any type of issues that the Waldo Canyon fire happened to cause. The programs, projects that the Chamber and the Visitor Center puts together, I can go through this whole list, and I'll quickly do that. On the bottom right, you'll see the front cover of our brochure. This brochure is out in 10 of the Visitor Centers. As you come into Colorado, our brochure is there promoting Woodland Park. Our signature posters go out the beginning of May. They go out in the whole region, talking about our signature events. Within the Visitor Center itself, we have a multitude of reference material from hiking, altitude awareness, camping, off-highway vehicles. Thanks to Bill, we've worked with him about off-highway vehicle trails. Anything anyone would want to know about our region, we have within the Visitor Center. You might ask, "Why altitude awareness?" We love it when those people from Kansas show up. They're breathing hard, and they're going to go hike Pike's Peak, and we hand them altitude awareness. They decide they might wait a couple of days at that point. Our community calendar is second to none, and it's populated by the community about the events. Our fam tours, familiarization tours. We put a group of people on a school bus. We've done this for the past six years. We've visited over 70 different businesses and attractions, lodging, within our region. And, what I find on that bus, first of all, it's always amazing that everybody doesn't know everybody. I just kind of assume they do. And, they get on that bus, and a lodging owner doesn't know this particular business owner, and by the end of the tour, they're doing business together. But, they're also seeing what we have to offer and promote in our region. We put together lodging binders. Those binders, we redo those binders every year. They reside in either lodging rooms or within the lobby of the lodging areas, and they're a success. They're quite a hit. Our lodging facilities love them. Our volunteer hours, our volunteers help us stay open seven days a week from Memorial Day through Labor Day, and they give us over 2,800 hours. And, we just had a volunteer retire after 18 years. Dora Kelstrom had been with us. We're not going to let her go. We're going to call her back next summer for a few hours, and she's going to continue to go to the different events that we try to get together every month and do. Our unique visitors, you'll see the numbers there. I skipped on the whiteboard. That's really a key component we do for lodging. Starting Memorial Day, my assistant Sue sends out an email every week to all of our lodging, and we ask two things. Let us know what you have available, and are you booked? They get very specific with us. They tell us which cabin. They tell us what day is open. They tell us if it's pet-friendly, those types of things. And, we are able to help the people who email, who come in and visit, and the people who call us. It has never failed yet, since I've been here for seven years, that someone hasn't shown up on July 3rd and said, "I'm here now. Where am I going to stay?" We're at high season at that point in time, so our lodging board really helps us out, letting them know where to go. Our unique visitors and phone calls, you'll see the numbers up there. You'll see that the top five states are similar in both categories, with the fifth state being different. But, as I put this presentation together, one thing stood out for me, and that was five years ago, when I stood here and talked to you all, the top states were Texas, Kansas, and then California. Colorado was always fourth and fifth. So, it's my belief that when you think about our staycation and our vacation promotions that we've been doing with our commercials, we've certainly had an impact in pulling Colorado up here to our region. Our website, second to none. We've had 2.5 million hits over the fiscal year that we've been talking about. We mentioned last City Council meeting, City Manager Butterey talked to you about it, showed a great picture of Sue and I. We were doing the thumbs-up about the USA Pro Cycle Challenge, and we were pleased to be a part of that this year. But, one of the components we wanted to make sure we did was educate the businesses. We wanted everyone to go away from that event having a great experience, and we knew that the mine or the casinos may not have a great experience if they didn't know they couldn't get their people up there that day, or to rearrange how they were going to do that. So, we were a part of the committee. We were pleased to be a part of it. It was great synergy in the community that day, and all of our businesses have had a great experience over that as well. Every couple of years, we actually do a survey to look at our lodging numbers. And, so, I thought it was important to share with you, so that you knew from a city and county perspective where we sat with lodging numbers. Within the city, we're looking at 94 cabins or rooms. Heads-to-beds is basically what they tell us, whether they have two double beds, and how many people they believe that they can house. So, overall, if you look within Teller County, if you're actually looking at facilities to put people in, while it may be a little bit of a geographic stretch to get everybody together, there's 2,600 people possibly that you could put in heads-to-beds. Then, we have over 1,300 campsites as well. So, we have sufficient number of lodging within our region to be able to bring different events up into the region. So, the key component of why I'm here, and that's kind of small to read, and I'm going to hand that out to you, so you will see it, is the financial recap. Just as I do within the Chamber, when you look at return on investment, you from the City Council and the mayor's position, look at, okay, the city has the Visitor Center contract with the Chamber, and what are we getting? So, last year, we received a little over $37,500 from the city for our Visitor Center contract. Our expenditures through advertising, tourism promotion, and volunteer appreciation, even staffing, because in the summertime, if you walk in, Sue, myself, and our volunteer will be working with groups of people, and there'll be people waiting in line. It's a very busy season. So, the actual operation cost about $49,000 to operate the Visitor Center, and the Chamber is more than happy to supplement the $11,000 difference to be able to operate a very successful business center. But, again, return on investment. This is hard. These are intangible dollars, and we've come up with a formula over the last several years that we look at. And, we take the city budget. So, we take the 2012 city budget. We look at sales tax, property tax, and lodging tax. Those are the taxes we believe we have an impact through the Visitor Center. And, again, it's intangible, so we go and we look at where do we have the most impact. We definitely believe that's on lodging tax. We do that through our commercials. We do that with the whiteboard. We do that through the familiarization tour that we do. We have impact on sales tax. We send people shopping, dining in our region. And then, we do a considerable amount of relocation packets that we send out, and even with our visitors. And, Sue and I both can tell you time and again, of visitors who have shown up here in our community, and then, two years later, they're here buying a house, because they were here to visit, and they really, truly enjoyed our community. So, an estimated impact on revenues pulling from those taxes is around $93,000. That's a $2.48 return on investment. And, in my book, that's a pretty good investment when you look at a contract for service. We're pleased to announce to you that we also received a $10,000 grant for the 2013 period. We'll be able to do a little bit of our commercials. Again, those will be pertinent for next year. But, a component we're looking at doing is a portal on our website that will be tourism-focused. And, this is just an example of what we're looking at, but we're looking at a collage where you'll take your mouse, you'll hover over one of those pictures, and for instance, where the bed is, that will be the lodging component. They'll be able to go in and go directly to lodging. So, this is kind of in the development stage. We hope to have it up and running before the end of spring, so it's ready for our very busy season. Before I go on to the next slide, I'm going to share with you that a dear friend of mine, who runs the Catalina Chamber, Catalina Island Chamber there in California, said to me, he doesn't go anywhere without, in his presentation, he puts something in there that's very near and dear to his heart. His name is Wayne Griffith. Wayne also, his son-in-law and daughter live in Colorado Springs. They are the owners of the franchise Five Guys Burgers and Fries. So, Wayne's familiar with our area. And, when he told me what he did, I thought about it, and I thought, you know, he's right, because there is something that's very, very near and dear to my heart. So, I'm sharing with you my grandbaby's pictures. Adriana and Alex, I got to see. They live back in Illinois, and I got to see them the first part of September when we were back there. And, I just think they're the most perfect grandbabies ever. So, I'm going to close and say thank you for letting me come tonight, make my presentation. I'll certainly open it up to you for any questions. Kip?
There's three different things. If you'll make sure that all of them get those as well. But, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks Debbie. Maybe you could also say a couple of words about how successful the Oktoberfest was. I know that's a...
I was going to put that in the slide, but I was trying to keep this succinct, but...
Well, now your mayor is making you go longer.
Our Oktoberfest broke all records from when we actually started. We had almost 6,600 people in attendance over two days. It was the most successful for a Saturday and Sunday. The other day, I thought, that's almost the population of Woodland Park. We almost doubled it in two days. We actually ran out of food on our first day. I've never seen Mr. Schnicker work so hard in my life. He's not with us tonight, but Jim Olson back there and Jed Bowman also back were in the cooking area. And, I never saw them stand around at all. So, it was just an absolute fabulous two days. Neil signed the check for the beer today, and he looked at the total, and he said, "They drank a lot of beer." And, they did. It was a great event. And, of course, we can't do that without the volunteers who step up. There's 250-plus volunteers who help us put that on, so it's really a community effort.
It was great, you know, from my opinion. And, I was there for quite a while on Saturday. Did not make it down on Sunday, but it was a great event, a good time, wonderful weather. Saw the folks up there slaving to serve food and cook food, and the whole thing. The setup and everything was really good.
It really was.
You know, congratulations to you and the whole team. And, I know Neil's not here tonight, but Neil and the whole Chamber Board and all the volunteers greatly appreciated.
We appreciate it.
Any comments from Council? Mr. Harrison?
Well, actually Debbie, I'd like to comment our mayor. And, I've got to tell you, eight years I have helped tap that keg. I was hit four times by Mayor Crane on the hand, and I was hit twice by Mayor Randolph. Mayor Turley, who I don't think has that much experience swinging a hammer in the construction field, did it perfectly.
Maybe Mayor Turley has experience with kegs.
Exactly.
Or you were sober.
But, the kegs we tapped, David.
Didn't use a hammer.
Anyway, it was a great time, and I understand. I did hear it was a record, which is awesome, because I can tell you from, and probably include Cindy Morris in this, that Oktoberfest used to be more work than anybody. We dreaded it. It was worse than most parents think about Christmas and coming. And, but, congratulations. And, also though Debbie, when you were mentioning the percentage of our lodging tax, was that for the year or just for the month of...
The 5% that I was mentioning, that was through August of this year, from August compared to August of last year.
But, only August. Do you have any idea where we're at as far as the overall year?
Overall year? No, Teri, I don't. I know for a region that we're down regionally about 25%, and that's from working with the Pike's Peak Regional Group. That got together during the fire. There was a group that was banded together. It was the Pike's Peak Country Attractions, Manitou Springs. It was the Colorado Springs Chamber. And, in working with them, Manitou certainly was devastated. They were hit very hard. We were as well. But, they, it's just been devastating from a tourism standpoint. Now, on the other hand, Colorado Tourism Office tells us Breckenridge, Vail, those other communities are actually up about 30%. So, while people stayed away from our region, people went to visit there. It gives me an opportunity, thanks Teri, to also explain, we put a lot of personal capital in at the Visitor Center during the fire. And, when I say that, I mean that we had people calling that we're going to cancel in October, November, December. They didn't want to come here. They didn't want to see burnt sticks. And, so, we spent a lot of personal time talking to them, asking them, "What are your concerns?" and being able to address those concerns. We worked with our lodging and asked our lodging people to have those customers call us. If they were getting ready to cancel, call the Chamber. Talk to the Chamber. We'll address any issues. We spent a lot of time doing that this year, because the national media did a number on Colorado with this Waldo Canyon fire, and we were able to address and let people know through pictures posted on Facebook that things were green up here, and it was fine to come here.
Well, and last, I do want to thank you for the breakdown between what we budget in our budget for the Visitor Center. And, every penny of that is used for the Visitor Center and not the Chamber. And, we as the Chamber actually do subsidize the Visitor Center, not only with dollars, but also with the Chamber volunteers to make all of that happen. And, I can promise you, this is one businessperson and councilperson that greatly appreciates that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's a great partnership. We enjoy it.
Just, you know, when you're talking about this year compared to last, on the lodging tax, one of the things that impacted us last year in a very positive way, as far as lodging tax goes, was all the work that was going on replacing roofs as a result of the hellstorm. And, so lodging tax was really up last fall because of that. So...
Absolutely.
When you kind of combine the downturn and look at how it was up last year, we actually came through this really pretty well, considering everything, I think.
We really did. And, again... The 5% that I was mentioning, that was through August of this year, from August compared to August of last year.
But only August. Do you have any idea where we're at as far as the overall year?
Overall year, no, Terry, I don't. I know for a region that we're down regionally about 25%, and that's from working with the Pikes Peak Regional Group that got together during the fire. There was a group that was banded together, it was the Pikes Peak Country Attractions, Manitou Springs, it was the Colorado Springs Chamber. And in working with them, Manitou certainly was devastated. They were hit very hard. We were as well. But they, it's just been devastating from a tourism standpoint. Now, on the other hand, Colorado Tourism Office tells us Breckenridge, Vail, those other communities are actually up about 30%. So while people stayed away from our region, people went to visit there. It gives me an opportunity, thanks Terry, to also explain, we put a lot of personal capital in at the visitor's center during the fire. And when I say that, I mean that we had people calling that we're going to cancel in October, November, December. They didn't want to come here, they didn't want to see burnt sticks. And so we spent a lot of personal time talking to them, asking them, "What are your concerns?" and being able to address those concerns. We worked with our lodging and asked our lodging people to have those customers call us. If they were getting ready to cancel, call the Chamber, talk to the Chamber, we'll address any issues. We spent a lot of time doing that this year because the national media did a number on Colorado with the Swaldo Canyon Fire. And we were able to address and let people know through pictures posted on Facebook that things were green up here and it was fine to come here.
Well, and last, I do want to thank you for the breakdown between what we budget in our budget for the visitor's center. And every penny of that is used for the visitor's center and not the Chamber. And we, as the Chamber, actually do subsidize the visitor's center, not only with dollars, but also with the Chamber volunteers to make all of that happen. And I can promise you, this is one businessperson and councilperson that greatly appreciates that, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's a great partnership, we enjoy it.
Just, you know, when you're talking about this year compared to last, on the lodging tax, one of the things that impacted us last year in a very positive way, as far as lodging tax goes, was all the work that was going on replacing roofs as a result of the hailstorm. And so lodging tax was really up last fall because of that, so...
Absolutely.
When you kind of combine the downturn and look at how it was up last year, we actually came through this really pretty well considering everything, I think.
We really did. And again, we focus and look at what we did with our commercials, and it just, we were very fortunate to have that process in place when this happened.
Other members, anything? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
By the way, his grandchildren?
Uh-huh.
They are only second to mine.
Well, okay.
Thanks Debbie, and thanks to the Chamber and all, everyone again. Thank you all for being here tonight. That's the end of our presentation's schedule for night. Cindy, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Just one brief update under City Managers and Department Managers' report from Kelly Case concerning the budget.
Okay. And we'll do that later on. Okay? Okay? And we'll move on to the consent calendar, and again, that's Cindy.
We have the minutes, and then we have the renewal for three different liquor licenses. The beer and wine license at the Tabawash Steakhouse, the hotel restaurant license at Manja Manja, and the hotel restaurant license at the Mayflower Chinese Restaurant. There are no issues with any of these renewals.
Any questions from council for Cindy? Anyone present have any comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Cindy, we'll take the vote.
Thank you. Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And we have no unfinished business for tonight, so we'll move on to item number eight, which is ordinances on initial posting. First one is looking for approval of ordinance number 1171. 1171, this is on initial posting concerning public sanitary sewer and storm drain easements. And for that, I'm going to turn to our Director of Utilities, Kip Wiley.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 1171 establishes the sanitary sewer and storm sewer easement at the Tamarack You can see up on the overhead projector, the, in the very middle, the highlighted area that will encompass the easement, the North Arrow BING, the Country Lodge, if you can see Lot Two on the left side, which would be the new Family Dollar, and the Lot One, the new O'Reilly's projects are there. This easement would be to support the sanitary sewer to those lots as well as the storm sewer. It's approximately .17 acres and connects that infrastructure from those projects into Shady Lane, which would be over here at the bottom right side of the page. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 1171 and set the public hearing for October 18th.
Any questions for Kip?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1171 on initial posting.
Second.
Any further discussion from council? Then we'll take a vote.
Thank you. Motion is to approve and set the public hearing for October 18th. Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And item 8B also concerns ordinance, this one's ordinance number 1172, and concerns public utility easement, initial posting, and setting the hearing for October the 18th. And for that, Kip will also update us.
Thank you. Ordinance 1172 establishes another easement for a 10-inch water line to connect from the Sturman's property. It'll run through the Womack Development and then also connect to another 10-inch water line on Highway 24. This is approximately a .21 acre parcel. You see on the overhead, it's kind of busy, I apologize. The dotted line in the very center, that is the portion that this easement will encompass. Up at the top arrow is where we have current easements, and then follow the dotted line down to Trout Creek Road is where this easement is located. It'll serve, it'll help serve the Womack Project for water, and it'll also increase flow, fire flows for the hospital as well. It connects two lines together in our system, which is very advantageous. It helps out extremely. Staff's recommendation is to approve ordinance 1172 and set the public hearing for October 18th.
Kip, that creates that loop that we've talked about previously, correct? That improves for the whole water situation, fire protection, and water flow for all of that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from, or comments from council? Terry?
Kip, will the cost of that water line be blended into all those developments, or...
As far as who's paying for it?
Yeah.
The Womack Project, they're building that infrastructure to support their project.
So it all comes from Womack's even though it's supporting the other two businesses?
Correct. There is a outstanding sewer reimbursement for Womack to the hospital, but no water reimbursements exist.
Other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion...
Please.
To approve ordinance 1172 on initial posting and set the public hearing for October 18th.
Second.
Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, we'll vote on the initial reading.
Thank you. Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
We'll move on to item nine. We have a couple of public hearings. Item 9A, application for Wild Wings and Things for a new hotel and restaurant liquor license. And for that, I'm going to turn to Cindy.
Thank you very much. This request this evening is for an application for a hotel restaurant liquor license for the business located in the Safeway Center, Wild Wings and Things. The applicant, Jeremy Fortin, is not able to be with us tonight, his mother is ill. But let me review for you the application details. You know where the business is. The applicant is eligible to hold a liquor license. He holds no other liquor licenses within this date, and the possession of the property is documented by a lease. We received this application on August 20th. The property was posted with a public notice sign, and also the notice that's required to be published in the Pikes Peak Courier-View was acted. Applicable fees have been paid, and a petition determining or representing the needs and desires of the neighborhood was submitted. It includes 14 signatures of residents and business owners in support of council's granting of this license. It is the staff's recommendation that following public hearing, council approve this application for a hotel restaurant liquor license for Wild Wings and Things. What questions may I answer?
Council, any questions? Hearing none, I'll open the floor for any public comment. Anyone? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment. Any final questions for Cindy? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Cindy?
Thank you. Motion is to approve. Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 9B is for application for a special event permit for Woodland Park Arts Alliances, Alliance for an event to be held on October 27th. Cindy?
Thank you. This is a request for a special, liquor special event permit or license from the Woodland Park Arts Alliance. They are one of the classic applicants for these kinds of single-day event permits. This is for a Halloween celebration to be held in the patio at Cowbell's and Deer Snake Gallery located at 214 West Midland. The date of the event is October 27th, located again right there on Midland. The hours of liquor service will be from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Event managers are Ralph Holloway and Deb Nichols. Alcohol will be served by tips trained individuals, specifically being Ralph Holloway and Deb Nichols. The application was submitted on the 21st of September. The property was posted by signing on the 24th. And the applicant, which is the Arts Alliance, has been issued three special events permits so far in 2012. They are permitted 15. It is the staff's recommendation that following public hearing, council consider approval for this special event liquor application. What questions may I answer?
Any? Yes, Terry.
Cindy, that's on the patio, so that would actually be on the north side, on the alley side, wouldn't it?
Correct. And it is fully fenced today.
Any other questions? Hearing, hearing no questions for y'all, I will open this item for a public hearing, public comment. Anyone? Hearing none, I'll close public comment. Any further discussions by council? I'll entertain a motion.
Recommend we approve the special events liquor license for the Woodland Park Arts Alliance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Cindy's done her job well. Cindy?
Thank you. Motion is to approve. Turley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And I'll move on to item... Yes, Eric.
You can announce it if you want, sorry.
No, you...
Okay. I'd just like to say that I, after consideration, talking with the city attorney, I've decided to recuse myself from this item.
Okay. Sounds good.
Bad as I am.
This is the public hearing for ordinance 1169, amending chapter 18 dot 39 of the Woodland Park Municipal Code, specifically the table of parking spaces, required parking requirements for residential and multifamily. And for that, I'll turn to Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this request or this amendment is to adjust the parking requirements for multifamily residential, to bring them more in line with what we think is the norm for these kinds of uses in similar communities, and to help encourage maybe more multifamily development in the community, and to reduce pavement, stormwater impacts, et cetera, as well as add what we don't have now, which is an alternative parking plan, which would allow an applicant to propose alternative parking requirements when it is felt that the requirements in the code are not a reasonable requirement for that particular development. That this would give them an option to propose something and for staff to consider it as an alternative, or as an administrative review, and council to consider and approve them with items that go in front of you. Staff is recommending that this application, or that this amendment, actually be tabled tonight. We think it's important enough that a full council hear and weigh this decision, so we're recommending that you table it till October 18th.
I think actually what we're going to do is something a little different. I think we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing and start that in case there's anyone here tonight that came here specifically for this item, and then we'll proceed a little bit from there. Any questions for Scott at this, discussed quite a bit at the last, on the initial reading? Any discussion for tonight, or on this item, for Scott?
I don't, but I think if we're going to open the public hearing, we don't want to close it.
That's what we're doing.
Correct. I'll make that motion, Terry.
We will entertain a motion for that. So we need, any questions from council at this time? Then I will open the public hearing at this time for anyone that's here to discuss this item, provide any comment to council. Anyone? Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to a date certain of the 1st of November, 2012, and that will allow the rest of the council to be in attendance to hear this particular issue. And because Councilman Smith has agreed to recuse himself, I think it's important that we get the largest number of our council members to take this into consideration.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? We'll have a vote on that. For the continuation of consideration of ordinance 1169, continuing the public hearing until the council, regular council meeting on November the 1st.
Thank you. Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
So Scott, I think we got the same thing happening that you were recommending. Eric, you may come back.
Thank you.
And we're continuing the public hearing until the meeting on November the 1st.
So like President Obama last night, tonight is my anniversary, 15th year. So I'm glad that you guys decided to move that along.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I don't have any new business scheduled. I have no one that has signed up to provide any public comment on items not on the agenda. However, if anyone is here and would like to address city council, you may do so at this time. Hearing none, then we'll do a mayor's report. Couple of things, not many tonight. Last Monday evening, the Colorado Municipal League held its district conference in Woodland Park. We started out here in council chambers. We got an update on a number of different issues that are coming up in the future that relates to municipal governments, including upcoming legislation, the upcoming election, and how those things might affect municipality. So that was a very good session. Also, and that included representatives from various municipal governments in the Pikes Peak Region, that's who comprises that particular district. We were the host for that. And I gave an update on, to the group on teamwork during the Swaldo Canyon Fire, and then David Butterby gave an update on the Pro Challenge Bicycle Race. It was a very good evening, a lot of good interchange, people getting a chance to meet other people, and I was very pleased to be able to participate in that. And we also had, there was a total of four of us from council that were at that meeting, so we had good representation at that. Upcoming, some upcoming activities. Next week is homecoming at the high school for the football team. Wednesday, October the 10th, will be the homecoming parade down Main Street in Woodland Park, down 24, and that will actually commence at 6:30. I think they start forming up at about 5:45, and that'll be followed at 7:30 over at Gateway Elementary with a bonfire. And encourage everybody in the whole community to come out and participate and enjoy all that. Should be a great time. And then next Friday, the 12th, at 7:00 PM will be the homecoming football game at the high school, and that should be a great time. And maybe better weather next Friday night than we're going to have this Friday night. I think it's Mitchell. Is that correct?
Yeah, I have one item. I'd like to, about a, it was just over a year ago, there's a running club that's in Cower Springs called Land Sharks Running Club, and a year ago, they actually began the club up here in Woodland Park, and that has carried over to this year. Last year, the first, in the fall, it's a cross-country season, and then the spring, it's at the, it was at the high school. It's a track event. Anyway, I just to talk about how there's about 100 kids that participated this year. It's all elementary school kids. It includes RE2 as well as school kids. I don't know if Lake George is RE2 or not, I don't think it is, but as far as the way is Lake George. And this year, we did it at the golf course, and it was great, a great partnership. They allowed the kids to run on the cart pass, which is great for cross-country. And then afterwards, they were open for dinner. And so it was a win-win, and I know they love the business, and so I just wanted to put that out there, and in the spring... And then afterwards, they were open for dinner. And so it was a win-win and I know they loved the business. And so I just wanted to put that out there and in the spring, hopefully we'll be at the high school again. And I say "we" because my wife is a coordinator for Teller County. And so hopefully we'll have more kids in the springtime running and appreciate the high school last year hosting it and hopefully they'll do that again this year, so.
Any other council reports?
No.
Just along the lines of the meeting and dinner that we attended last Monday with the Colorado Municipal League. I will be attending the CML Policy Committee Meeting on the 19th and when I return from that, I will have a report for the council.
Very good. Nothing, Mr. Mayor? Thanks John. Anything from our city attorney?
I have nothing.
Cindy from staff?
Just a brief comment from Kelly on the budget.
Okay. Thanks Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Appreciate you being here, getting into the season.
It is. Pleased to announce that the draft 2013 budget will be delivered to you by tomorrow evening. Believe it'll be ready, if not, some...
It will be.
Unseen, it will be delivered tomorrow. We have Monday, but look forward to that tomorrow. And please pay particularly attention to the budget calendar. We have made an adjustment in that because the DDA Board will be concurrently reviewing the DDA budget for them and their debt service fund while you're reviewing the budget. And we will review that budget in two meetings. We've kind of made a change on the budget calendar. So please pay attention to that so that you're prepared for the things that we have planned to talk to on those days and look forward to that exchange with you.
And because of the complexities of going through the budget and everything, that will be coming to us hard copy?
I was gonna ask.
And so you'll be getting that. I'd probably also like to be able to get it, is it also available soft copy?
We are going to send it to you in both a binder and electronically.
That'll be great.
So look for that in an email and a knock at your door by a nice police officer.
Okay. Outstanding. Thank you.
Thanks for the warning.
Any questions for Kelly?
Thanks for the warning.
And if I can answer any questions offline, I'm around and happy to do that for you.
Okay. Thanks Kelly.
Thank you.
Any other staff reports?
No, sir.
No comments on written correspondence?